We've got to let the angry mass in. It's all a conspiracy.
Mm-hmm. There she is. Oh, she's got long hair.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. We're going to call the regular meeting of the Conway City Council to order.
I mean, I'm sorry, Planning Commission. I said City Council. We're not that. Sorry. We have several things on the agenda tonight. Some public hearings, and we've got a full house. So just raise your hand if you're here for soul food. Soul food. Okay. Okay. All right, that's going to be the first item on our agenda. Let me take care of business here, and then we'll get into that. Yeah, I know. All right, the Conway Planning Commission makes recommendations to the City Council on public carrying items. We have three tonight. The City Council will make a final decision on these items using the Planning Commission recommendations as a guide. Items reviewed at tonight's Planning Commission meeting may be considered by the City Council on January 9, 2018. Items not approved by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council within 30 days after Planning Commission denial. If an item is appealed to the City Council, a public notice sign will be placed on the property at least seven days prior to the City Council meeting, and a public notice will be placed on the city's website, cityofconway.org. The first item on the agenda is we need to address the November meeting minutes for the meeting. Has everybody had a chance to look over them?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay. A motion by, Wendy, a second by Marilyn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Then it's approved. Okay. We're going to set some ground rules. We got a lot of emails. If you sent an email, we read it, please don't get up and speak. We got a lot of people here tonight. We're going to give each side, fors and against, somewhere in the neighborhood of 20, 30 minutes. If you start repeating yourself, I'm sorry, we're going to call you down. The first speaker's got 10 minutes. Subsequent speakers have two for both sides. So with that being said, the first item on the agenda is the Soul Food Cafe Mission request for conditional use permit to allow religious activities in an A1 zoning district for property located at 1715, 1717, and 1727 South Donaghy Avenue. So who is here to speak in favor of this request? Mr. Harvey? If you'll say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I am Rick Harvey. I live at 168 Sunshine Farms Road, Bigelow, Arkansas, 72016, if you need to visit. Thank you very much for the time this morning to address you and to address the entire body that's here tonight. Appreciate this time. I want to introduce an attorney that we have with us, and this is Abby Sutherland and Carly Gemel. And they're from the Americans Centers for Law and Justice, the ACLJ. I may be referring to them periodically. If you give me a question I can't answer, I may be referring to them. I want to let you know that our intent at Soul Food Cafe Mission is to be a church. We've always been a church. In fact, if you'll look in your booklet, you'll find that in our history, we were started back in December 13, 1991. Burl York was the founding minister. I'm not going to go into all the history, but I do want you to know that we are celebrating our silver anniversary, 25 years of ministering to the community of Conway. We're not some cult. We're mainline, non-denominational. We believe in the one true God, the deity of the Lord Jesus Christ. We believe in the death, burial, and resurrection of a Lord. We believe in our soon-coming King, just like most of the denominational churches in Conway believe. What we really want to do is we want to fulfill the great commission and go into all of the community, which we figure it's our city first and then the rest of the world, and tell people about the gospel. I've been a licensed minister for really over 33 years. It says here in this booklet, 33. And I was licensed with the Assemblies of God for several years, about 32 years or so. But Soul Food Cafe Mission and its non-denominational bylaws allows the license for me, and so I'm licensed with Soul Food Cafe Mission right now. What we do on Tuesdays is we open up our doors at nine o'clock. In fact, I want to even start before that. At the place we have right now that we're looking for religious activity. Of course, we're doing the warehousing. We're putting boxes together. We're sorting clothes. We're packing up 30-foot box trucks, and we're packing them up, and we're driving them over to these facilities. We've been to a lot of different facilities in Conway. The first place we went to was 32 Bronny Lane, which was in the county at the time. I believe it's city now. It's right by the hospital, the new Baptist hospital. After that, we went to Four Winds Church, which was 2005 Dave Ward Drive. You probably know that's Church Row. And we were there for four, five years. We were there for five years. Neighborhood all around us never had any problem at all. Neither at 32 Bronny Lane. All that was a little more rural. After that, we actually, Mark Dance, the pastor of Second Baptist Church, asked us to come to his facility and use it. And so we did, and we were there for two and a half years. Then it transitioned over to Ministry Center, in which we remained another two years. So we were there four and a half years with all the surrounding community there, right by CBS, corner of Oak and Hark Rider. Never had any problem, no criminal activity in the neighborhood. From there, we actually moved to First Church of the Nazarene, right smack dab in the middle of the neighborhood. It's 1501 Scott Street. That church has been so gracious to us, been so good to us. No criminal activities at all. We've been there now probably a little over 18 months, and so it's just going really smooth. Now, Tuesday, which tomorrow morning, if you guys would like to come, and I'd like to invite anybody that would like to come, if you need a food box, but if you just want to see what we do, would love for you to come. Our doors will open at nine, even though we'll get up at four o'clock in the morning to get everything prepped up to actually haul two 30-foot box trucks. Plus, we have a trailer there on their campus that we'll have to set up and tear down chairs and all these different things. And when we're done, we'll have to tear it all back down again. That's why we have our facility, so that we don't have to set up and tear down. We spend six hours setting up and tearing down. We're only open six hours. We do this once a week to do this. It's just ridiculous. And we've got this wonderful building, a building that actually the city has known from the very beginning. Even Lynn Hicks, when he was the inspector, told us that we would be grandfathered in when I was putting in the foundation. We put in the foundation, the four corners, bibles, zipped up in Ziploc bags, gallon Ziploc bags, and we put them at every corner of our building. And we had to poke them down with some rebarbs because they tried to float up on us, but we hung them up in our, some rebarb, and they're in there now. We did that. We prayed over every corner of our building. We said, "God, will you use this building for your glory? Will you use it for your kingdom?" Because that's what we want to do. Now, we open up our doors at nine o'clock, and people come in, and we have a continental breakfast for them, coffee and tea. They sit down. We have some music playing. We open up a clothing area. We open up a toiletry area. When I say toiletry, I don't mean toilets, toilets and showers, but I'm talking about items. We call them health, beauty, and home items, that they can pick what they need. Then at 10 o'clock, we actually have a service. I preach most of the time. You could see that I could probably preach. I'm going to probably take all my 10 minutes here. But let me just tell you this much. We have an altar call. People get saved. Last Tuesday, 16 people accepted Jesus Christ as their Lord and Savior. We water baptized one. In the morning, we're going to be giving Christmas communion to people that don't enter the doors of our normal churches, that don't experience.
Let's stop the time, just real quick.
Because of the train? Will I get allotted on the end, the extra time?
We're all aging up here. We can't hear as well.
Thank you for stopping.
Okay, go ahead.
And so we're just a church. That's all we are. And what we want to do is we want to just continue to do what we've been doing for the last 16 years. And actually, it's gone on really for 25, but it's just more of a concerted effort to really reach out to those who are in need. But basically, sharing the love of Jesus Christ with people. We want a thing of religious activity. That's all we're asking. We're not going to do overnight shelter. We're not trying to get homeless. We're not sneaking this in. We've not, people think we're sneaky. We're not sneaky. I'm telling you. Brian Patrick, he was at the meeting with Bart Caspary and Kenny Weedower, and we all, at Rick Sowell's office. Elizabeth Hamilton was there. We laid out our plans. They knew exactly what we were doing. Oh, I got building permits from the city. Everything we do is even inspected by the city inspector. We have done nothing underhanded here. Everything we've done is above board. We spent over $200,000 putting a sprinkler system that Conway Corp came in and did. I mean, we're up to code. Fire marshal gave us occupancy already. They just said we couldn't, occupancy for what we're actually doing, only warehousing and some of the other stuff. So we're limited there. But we spent over $500,000, and so many people have donated to let us be there and put our building up. And all of a sudden, we're told we can't do it, and we don't understand that. So I want to, I want to address just some quick issues. There's 10 of them. I'm going to try to go through them pretty quickly. First of all, this is the wrong location. It's just a little flyer in the very beginning of your notebook, so it's not, it's just a loose leaf. First of all, we're not a wrong location. Every church that you go into this city is in a neighborhood. We've already been in four or five different churches across the city. Never had any problem, no criminal activity, nobody breaking into homes, no pedophile acts happening, nobody getting stabbed or shot, or anything else that you can conjure up. This fear factor that's going on here is just, it's just outrageous. It just doesn't happen. You can check police records if you'd like to. The other thing was, is that, let's see, our property values will go down. Now, you also have this too, and it's tucked in the thing. We did a research with a local Realtor of property values. No joke. When we study property values, the closer you get to our building, the better you sell your property for a higher price. It's crazy. But the closer you get to our building, the property values go up. They don't go down. And, you know, we've been told the property values are going down and down and down and down and down, and they're not going down. And there's proof right here. These are actual records that any Realtor can get. And I just didn't pick just all the honey in the hole. I mean, we got them all there, so you can research that yourself. Also, too, we're not doing overnight stay. We're not going to do overnight stay. If we do overnight stay, we'll choose another location. Believe me, we'll be consulting with you all before we even do that. I'm not going to go through that again. And then, are children safe? I want you to know that children are safe. My kids grew up in Soul Food Cafe Mission. And not only that, but we've actually had little kids come from elementary schools. And in fact, we've had whole classes come over the years, but just recently, 11-8-17. Dear Miss Amanda, she's one of our team leaders. She said, "Thank you for inviting us to Soul Food Cafe Mission and come and help. I really like packing boxes for families. I also like sorting fruits and vegetables and then putting them into shopping carts. I really feel proud of myself since I packed all those boxes for families in need. If it wasn't for soul food, then there would be many more people hungry than there are right now. I hope I can come back again." And that was Jackson, fourth grade, fourth grade. We've never had any problem with little children at all. Another issue people say is, "Well, our clients will get hurt because they're going to be walking to our facility." Most people that come to our facility, quite frankly, drive. We had an African missionary come in, and he says, "You mean your poor people drive? Our poor people don't even have cars. How do they do it?" Well, our poor people drive. Folks, our poor people have, they either get a taxi, or they have their own car, or they carpool. And so, by the way, if we do help anybody that doesn't have a house, we're talking about people that maybe burned out their house. I caught a call today from a lady who lost her job. Her husband lost his job. They ended up having a vehicle breakdown. I mean, they're in bad straits. It can happen to you, and it can happen to me. And those kinds of people, honestly, and I'm ashamed to give you this percentage, but they're only 4.6%. they're only 4.6% of all the people that we help. I mean, I can, I can show you our statistics. We report to several different agencies. 4.6%.
You have about a minute left.
How many?
You have about a minute left.
Boy, I gotta talk fast. Okay. Now, what about being close to a school or daycare? Every church is close to them. A lot of churches have daycares. There's a list there in number two for that. Let's see what else here. wooded area. You know, the Watson Brothers have purchased the land round about us. They're going to take all those woods down. There ain't going to be tents in no wood. There ain't going to be no woods. I feel sorry for the deer because there's so many deer out there. We got a haven for deer, so we don't have to worry about that. We're not going to build duplexes, so we don't have to worry about the traffic flow because we never intended to do duplexes. That was another hysteria thing, that I don't know where that came from, because we never even wanted to do that. All right. All I want you to do is to prayerfully consider this, because we mean no harm. We've been helping this city for 16 years. We haven't asked you for a dime. We're not even funded by government. We're funded by just generous people, and mostly businessmen, Mr. Quinn. Mostly businessmen are the ones who actually send us checks in order for us to operate the business we're on. I don't get a salary. There's nobody in this room that gets a salary. No one has ever gotten a salary in the last 16 years. We do this voluntarily. I have an insurance business. I do well with that. God has blessed me. I don't need a salary. So you can see from our heart, we're wanting to help this community. We're wanting to be good neighbors. We love you guys. Some of you guys, I don't know how you feel about us. I feel like you don't like us, but I'm telling you, we love you. If your house burns down tonight, I'll be there for you.
Time is up. Thank you, sir.
Okay, subsequent. Obviously, you have a lot of support here, and we want to hear from anybody who's got something else to offer. Just by showing up, you've shown us that you have the support, but we'll entertain more speakers. It'll be limited at two minutes.
Two.
Okay.
My name is Ella Ware. I stay at 329 Locust, and I was a victim of Katrina. And I'm right here from Katrina, and I had, I met Rick and his family, and they treated me like family. And I get one income a month, and it's hard. I go over there and get food because when I pay my bills, I don't have no money to buy no food. So I go over there, and they give me food every week to help me and my family out. And I'm saying this from my heart. I love these people because New Orleans don't help us like out here in Conway. They have the resources that we get out here in Conway is nothing like New Orleans. They don't help us at all. So I thank God for moving out here in Conway, but I appreciate it.
Well, we're glad you found our community.
Well, I'm a resident of Conway now.
Good deal.
I intend to stay a resident of Conway. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else to speak in favor?
I cancel members. My name is Virginia Cogdell. I live in Brookside Trailer Park on Oak Street. That land, when I first moved out here, held Conway Celebration Church. We had church in the barn that's still sitting on that land. Soul Food has been helping my family, and for the last three years, since I've been disabled to work, I get $15 a month in food stamps, so they're feeding me. And I don't see what the difference between Conway Celebration Church was and what Soul Food is. All the neighborhood is invited. You go to any other church, you get a box that'll last you one day that's supposed to last you a whole month. You go to Soul Food, you get a box that'll last you a week until you can go back to next week to get you another box. They're just God-fearing people trying to do what the Lord's telling them to do. Like I said, I hadn't seen anything wrong. We've got members here. We got a beautiful baby that we got designated the Soul Food baby because she was put on an ambulance at Soul Food and sent to the hospital. And that baby is healthy, and it's being fed with help of Soul Food. Rick, Tracy, their family is my family. I don't have a father or mother, but I got a big brother. I mean, please let us have our building open for us to use instead of being, okay, we need to relocate, we need to, we're going to be redecorating our building, so we need y'all out. We need someplace steady, and that's what our building is, is a steady place.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Your name and address, please.
My name and address, Amanda Austin, 623 Sixth Avenue.
623 Sixth Avenue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I, I just got off work, so I'm not wearing red. But this man right here, he carries the Holy Ghost with him, and he's amazing. I went to Soul Food like a year ago in January, and I got baptized the same day that I was there. You know, and I went in there to get, to get some food for some other people, actually, and the girl, and I just said, you know, I wasn't doing anything inside myself. I'll ride with you. But it had been in my heart to, you know, get baptized because of God, and this man knows God, you know? And he did my baptismal. It was like a year ago, January 5th. And, you know, now I go to hear instruction, and, you know, I am, I'm the original fat kid, you know? My mom said I was the first one to get to the table and the last one to leave, and I still am, so he feeds my heart and soul, you know? I don't go to church anywhere else, but he does. He instructs us, and it's a beautiful thing, you know? It provides a foundation for social and, you know, social and food and, you know, love and medicinal, you know, toiletries, you know, for people, you know? And clothing, you know? So, and he gives tents to the homeless, and, you know, so I, you know, I wouldn't want to have to answer to God if you didn't, if I didn't, you know, let them stay in the community and allow them in there.
Okay. Thank you. That's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not comfortable speaking publicly, but I understand what it's like to be down here, you know, struggling to get by. I borrowed $3 to get here for gas, you know? My word is my bond, and I said I'd pay it back tomorrow. Paydays, you know, not until, you know, Thursday or Friday.
Thank you, ma'am. We're at time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
God bless y'all.
If you don't mind, tilt that microphone down a little bit so that everybody can hear. There you go.
Like this?
Yes, ma'am. If you'll say your name and address, please.
My name's Brittany Erby, and my address is 501 Water Plant Road, Ola, Arkansas, apartment 38, 7205, or-
That's okay. Don't worry.
Actually, I've already been spoke about. The Soul Food baby she was speaking about was my son. I've been going to this place for altogether now about three years, and I was told that it was medically impossible for me to get pregnant. And this man prayed and prayed with me, and then I found out I was pregnant. And I was rushed out of there by ambulance because they had to stop my labor because I went into preterm labor. I had my son, and he's now two months old. And this man and everybody that works at Soul Food Cafe, I don't have a lot of people on my side. All I have is my mom and my little sister. And I've gone through about a cancer chemo, and they were there for me the entire time. And I've had people look at me judgmental because I get so weak sometimes because of the after effects of chemo, and these people never looked at me with a judging face at all. They were always there for me. And if it wasn't for them, my son wouldn't have a Christmas this year. I wouldn't have food for me to eat. I wouldn't have clothes for me and him. I mean, they even, out of their personal pocket, helped me get my son's medication when I couldn't pay for it. These people care about everybody. It doesn't matter who you are. And, I mean, all I'm asking is just, give us a chance. We're not there to cause problems. We're just there to get help. And you'd be amazed at how many people come in there for help and how many people have been saved. I mean, and there was a man there that couldn't even see out of one eye, and they prayed over him, and he can see out of that eye now. These people have helped everybody. Please just give them a chance and let us be there, because that way, no matter what, people always have at least some kind of family to come to. Some of us don't have family to go to, and these people are our family. We may not be blood, but they're family. Please give them a chance.
Thank you.
I'm Cindy Moore, 78 Isaiah Luke, Conway. I've only been in Conway, February, be two years. My husband has drove for Soul Food for, since they began, or before they actually were Soul Food, I think. So this is my first time to be here because I've always been working. And I am amazed at what I've seen. I worked in a mission in Oklahoma through the Cherokee Nation and stuff. What they do is over and beyond any that I've ever seen anywhere. You know, you go in there, you're going to get your hair cut, you're going to get blessed, you're going to get prayed for, you're going to get food, you're going to get other things. And I was listening, I told Rick a while ago, on the 102.9, the talk radio in Little Rock, they called in the other day, they were talking about the homeless situations and stuff, and most of the homeless people don't go to the missions. They tend to want to be out and panhandle and things like that, the people that you see that you're worried about. The people that are, that are reaching out to them are just like everybody else. They're just down on their luck, or they don't make enough money. Arkansas, I have my own business. I'm a tax preparer. Arkansas has a very low income, you know, and people don't understand. And you want to sit in judgment, and I read something the other day. They asked this little girl, "What is love?" And she said, "God is love." That's all God says, is we're supposed to love each other. And to be a Christian, we're supposed to be Christ-like. And I've sat here tonight, and I've watched a particular person sit and make faces and snicker and everything when he's talked about things that they've done to help people. And I just feel like you're on dangerous ground, because God is blessing this man, and he's going to continue to bless Soul Food no matter what, but he's asking for the blessings of this town. And you can't turn your back on everybody in this town that, because any of us are a paycheck away from losing whatever you have. What if you lost something? What if you got hurt? What if you had a wreck? They didn't have insurance. Not everybody has a little nest egg.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, my name's Cheryl Pickens, and I live at 21627 Jeff Road in Hensley, Arkansas, 72065. Ooh, I get scared talking to a lot of people. But I just really need to say this, that my family also went through Hurricane Katrina, and I had five kids. And we came back here because we had family here, and we came to the mission, and they gave us a food box every week that helped feed my family during that time and anything that we needed. In fact, I even got a refrigerator from them. And I also want to say that I'm a school teacher, Arkansas certified school teacher, and a pastor's wife. And we have gone there to do ministry work and brought our children's, our children's group in there to do puppets and stuff for the people. We've led the singing, the hymns, and the people love to sing the hymns, and if they can't sing, they just love to listen to the hymns. But I also, as a school teacher, I taught at Maumell Charter High School last year, and I taught business and computer science. And in their marketing book, it talked about a DECA club. So we started a DECA club, and in our DECA club, we had Rick come and speak, and he gave us an example of a businessman that took part of his profits and created something for the community and did a community outreach, which is really popular right now, to take part of your income as a businessman and invest it in your community, which is what he did. And he shared that with my kids and how he did it. And also, the kids cannot graduate from high school without community service hours. So after he spoke, I brought my DECA club to, I think I brought maybe 11 or 12 kids, and they helped sort the fruits and vegetables. And then we helped the people and served them food on the line and passed out toiletries or whatever they needed. So those kids got community service hours, and they loved it. They wanted to come back, so. And there was no danger there with those kids, and they had a good time. They loved it. So for what it's worth, that's my input, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this request?
Dwayne Girdon, 13 Brewster Lane, Conway, Arkansas. I just want to ask, I'm just going to ask you a question and leave it at that. Do you think it's better for people that are in it, that have a need, to know there's a place to go than rather than they got to find it somewhere else like stealing or whatever they got to do? If you're hungry, you don't have any food, you got to do something. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hang on just one moment, ma'am.
How you doing? My name is Philip Fletcher, 2652 Bruce Street here in Conway. I am the executive director of City of Hope Outreach, and just for transparency, I serve on the mayor's commission for homeless task force as well, just for transparency. But I don't speak for the committee. I speak for myself in support of Mr. Harvey and Tracy and Soul Food. For the last 10 years, since Coho's been operating, I've been working with Soul Food Cafe and seeing the great work that they do. I've spoken there, I've preached there on occasions. It is very important this work continues. They are in a place where they have to move, but their work and their ability to provide food and to provide clothing provides a very substantive need in our city. As a lady previously mentioned, we are a state that is low income. We are a city, a county that is low income, about 18%, all right? And so with the many men, women, and children who are on food stamps, who are on public assistance, their ministry provides a necessary buffer for the limited amount of money that people receive on government assistance. And so I would encourage the commission to remember that these men, these men and women in these red shirts who serve every Tuesday, they are providing a human need, a human need, which is food. Food, so that children can eat when they go to school, so that children can have food when they come home. They're providing a need for food for parents. It is shown in studies that a lack of food impacts education, all right? That a lack of food impacts employment. And so I would encourage the commission to remember that it's not just about food that is being addressed here and to provision of food and clothing, but the other associated things that happen with men, women, and children who lack such things as food, their education, their employment, and everything else.
Thank you, sir.
And so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Dave Lefler. I'm a volunteer at Soul Food Cafe Mission. I've been there ever since I retired. And I thank this man for all that he's done for everybody out there. He has blessed, he doesn't care anything about you. He loves every one of you. And he loved me the same way. And we need people like it because this, this country needs it more so right now than ever before in our history because there's too much turmoil out there, too much hatred. And we need to get back to start loving one another again. And this is exactly what this man is doing. I've been volunteering out there at the warehouse. And I've been going on Mondays and Tuesdays. I normally put in somewhere around six, seven hours on Monday. And then I'll put in another four, four hours or so on Tuesday. But I don't go over anymore to hand out the food boxes because I've had some health issues and I'm not strong enough to lift those food boxes anymore. But I can do the stuff back over there at the warehouse of making the boxes and things like that. And it's because of all of these things that these people out here that have come up, and there's hundreds more that you're not seeing, because he read the reports of how many people are coming and getting food boxes every week. And it's amazing. If you would come to see this operation one time, you would know exactly why we need Soul Food Cafe Mission now. Thank you very much.
Okay, let me, let me just interject here. Just, we understand that this is a very needed, needed service and mission and all of that stuff. We're dealing strictly with the land use. And we have all admiration in the world for Mr. Harvey and what he's doing. So if you're coming to speak to that, we're, we're sold on that. You don't have, you don't have to sell us on this. We understand that it's a needed thing, but we have to deal strictly with the land use at this point. So with that being said, if you have anything further, go ahead.
I was just going to reassure about the safety because I've been, I'm his son Ricky Harvey. Address is the same as his. 168 Sunshine Farms Road. And I've been working at the mission since I was two years old, pushing carts around. So if there's any kind of worry-ness about children being unsafe or anything like that, I reassure you that there's no worry about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to the other side. Is there anybody here to speak in opposition of this request? And again, the first person will have 10 minutes, subsequent people will have two. Let's try to not repeat ourselves.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and everybody. Rick, we know you're doing a great job.
Sir, we need your name.
We need your name and address. And you need to address the commission.
Okay, commission. My name is David Georgie. I live on 1680 Hosta. I am the president of the Spring Valley Property Owners Association. As the commission has indicated, Rick, we all, there's no question what you do is great, okay? I'm in the position, I represent 321 homes. We have some residents, quite frankly, that support as you have presented here. We have some residents that are indifferent to it. We have a fair amount of residents that I've been hearing from that are attending my meetings that have a real concern over a couple of things, their property value, in particular if you're going to come back in the future and ask for overnight stay. I understand that from Mr. Chuck Lawson, the city attorney, that there may be some restrictions placed on this. We'd like to know what they were going to be. So we just want to have a better feel for that. All right, okay? Thank you.
That's to be decided by the commission if, if it passes. I've got a question for you, just out of curiosity.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a breakdown of how many of those 321 people or households are opposed? How many are indifferent and how many are for it?
Fifty-sixty opposed. And all of those would be up, would be on, would be on Dahlia, Apple Blossom, Dahlia, Morning Glory, and let's see, Zoya.
Okay.
Zoya is right now is going to have, having Mr. Watson's building a subdivision up against Zoya right now.
Right.
Okay. Another concern we have particularly is there's two small streets off of our subdivision. One on Violet, which is a sub-street, which leads into the ground where Mr. Rick is. And the other one is Buttercup, which leads into the area where Mr. Watson's constructing a new subdivision. Concern about traffic in the future, if some of the streets are going to go through too.
Okay.
So it's not only, it's not only.
It's already been done.
Well, it's a land thing. Understand, I understand about the subdivisions, but again, it's access in for that road.
Right.
So there could be a traffic problem.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Terrell. I live at 2535 Apple Blossom. I am voicing my opposition tonight against the conditional use to allow Soul Food to feed the homeless out of their warehouse on South Donaghy. I want to speak on behalf of those too young to represent themselves. The Spring Valley subdivision is home to many children of different ages at daycare and in elementary school. Allen Smith, in particular, is a hub of activity in the morning and in the afternoon, with some kids having to cross Favre as well as South Donaghy, or both on foot to get to school or to go home. This in and of itself is already a dangerous situation. And combined with extra foot or car traffic could become even more of a safety issue. The proximity of the warehouse to the daycare and the back of the neighborhood also concerns me. There are young children who live in the back of the neighborhood and attend the daycare. And should violence erupt, could put them in harm's way or scare them. One bad incident is one too many, and it would break my heart to see anything bad happen to anyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak in opposition?
Hello. Morning. My name is Leslie Hill Meyer. I live at 2315 Dahlia. I'm directly adjacent to the Soul Food Cafe warehouse where it is now. You'll have to forgive me, I get very nervous when I speak. I'd like to say that it's, it's very unfortunate that we as residents have been painted with a brush that says we're unsympathetic or that we do not understand the struggles of other people. We all have our struggles, even if they're not financial. Previously, I resided in a neighborhood where there was an incident that two males shot at each other. It's changed my life forever. It's giving me lasting anxiety and PTSD that I deal with every day. But I'm a nurse and I'm very self-aware. And that's something that I have working in my favor. One of the things that I wanted to discuss, if this is approved, are the things that I feel would make me, for me feel more comfortable as a homeowner directly adjacent to your property. I have a couple of pictures. The first pictures I would like to show you are the view from my back porch of Soul Food. This is the view of the property and the warehouse. I've never had any personal interaction with Mr. Harvey. The only interaction I've had with Soul Food has been very limited through this. And unfortunately, my first impression last summer was not a great one as my children, my two young girls, five and eight, who go to Allen Smith and KU, came running in and said, mommy, why is there a man outside mowing in his underwear? And so I went outside, I brought my kids in. There was a gentleman out there in a Speedo and flip flops mowing, okay? Now understandably, if we go to the pool, we're going to see things like this. This is my safe haven, my home, and it was very disturbing, okay?
They were mowing at Soul Food?
Yes, they were mowing up around the, the parking lot. And if you, if you notice the, this is their parking lot. So it's up where if you're standing up there, I can see your feet. So it's not like there was somebody on the other side of the fence that they really couldn't see. And this gentleman was in.
Let me just ask this, when did you buy your house?
I've been there, I bought last year in November. And this home was constructed in 2006.
Ma'am, we're, we're at time for your allotment, but I do want to ask you, you mentioned that you had some suggested conditions that would
Yes.
make you at, more at ease if this were approved. Could you maybe describe what those conditions were?
Absolutely. I would like to show you this as well. This is the view from Soul Food. And I'd like to leave these pictures with y'all, if that's okay. I'll just set them here. I'll give them to you in a minute. Some of the things that would make me feel more comfortable is that in the, in the stipulations that there is a specified clause that says no one would be allowed to stay overnight. There would be something mentioned in there about nobody residing temporarily or permanently. I know you have no intentions of doing that, but that would, I feel like, decrease the contention that we may have over that issue. At minimum, an eight-foot privacy fence up on the level of the parking lot would be very beneficial for us as neighbors, as property owners, because there are quite a few boxes and such that, that sit around, you know, and as they wait for their cardboard person to come, it, it kind of gets a little less than desirable looking. That's, you know, that's a side note. But the fence itself would help to shield my, my family and the residents around us from gravel, debris, whatever else, and any issues that may arise if there were, you know, tense moments between patrons, it would be shielded from, from the neighborhood. Specified hours and days that they're allowed to operate, you know? And I feel like some people may think this is, you know, overreaching. But I have looked at some that have been passed previously in previous years here. There's been hours, there's been, you know, paved parking lot, one, you know, for every one car, you know, a certain amount of parking spaces and such paved. And so these are things that I feel like are acceptable for us as homeowners to ask for without overreaching and saying that we should be, you know, we, we have more right than you to be there. Because we, as homeowners, have to follow those codes and ordinances as well.
So I have the, the no overnight stays, the eight-foot privacy fence and the specified hours and days of operation. Any other suggestive conditions?
Just the parking lot, maybe just, not necessarily a paved parking lot, but some improvement to the parking lot that, that may help with like dust, noise, debris issues, you know, with this being up above my lot and above the lots around me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak in opposition of this request?
Mr. Watson.
My name's Kevin Watson. I live at 680 Paget Road here in Conway, Arkansas, and on the property that surrounds pretty much Soul Food Cafe. And we were up here, you know, a few months back. And at that time, I said that I have no problem with the value of Soul Food Cafe and the mission that they have, with the people involved. Who would, who would have a problem with that? I mean, they, they serve a need. At that time, the request was for overnight stay, which, you know, I didn't think that was the right spot at all, just because of the, and obviously Soul Food does a lot more than I thought they did. I mean, I had no idea. I read Rick's Facebook all the time about how many things they send out. And it's amazing what they do. So with that said, with a conditional use permit granted, there should be some conditions for the neighborhood, for the one that exists and the one that's forthcoming with ours, Robinmar subdivision. I do think it's only fair to ask that there are hours of operation and, you know, they're coming under the, you know, religious use. And what is religious use? And what hours does, does that, you know, what does that mean? And so I would ask that both the neighbors that exist, and I feel like they're willing to, to, you know, listen and, and to get what they're so strongly in favor of and want to do. I can see that in their, in their, their drive. So as far as the value of Soul Food and needing to, you know, praise them, I think they do a great job, you know? And if they get the conditional use, then I think it has to have conditions. I think it's only fair to the existing neighborhoods. With the future neighborhoods, it's only fair. It would, you'd want it if it's next to your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Hyatt. I live at 1675 Churchill, about 200 feet from the building. I think if this is passed, the couple of things I'm worried about are because their ministry is focused towards homeless, I feel like the barn on that property makes me nervous. I feel like bringing people into the area, it may make people aware that there is a large, very large structure that is empty on their property that they might want to come back and stay or sleep. I know from the fire station up on the hill, they've already had a problem with squatters in the barn once this, over this past year, because I did speak to them about that. And then I think, so as you come through the roundabout and you go up the hill towards South Donaghy, Morning Glory, you turn on Morning Glory and my house is there, Churchill. I think if their ministry, the way that it works is cars drive through like they do, I feel like that is going to create so much traffic right there, even at school times. Like maybe if, if the pickup, the food pickup is three, 3:30, it's just going to create so much traffic through there. And then the way their driveway is set up, I don't really know how they're going to bring cars in at the same time bring cars out. So I do feel like maybe an easement issue, it's not wide enough, that kind of a thing. So I think those are the things I'm kind of wondering, how's the traffic going to flow around that time? And then the barn, it really makes me nervous. I do just feel like there might be potential squatters there. And who's going to regulate that and watch over that? And how would we really know? So that's it. But I do, I am thankful for what they do and I'm, I'm just sorry. So, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak in opposition of this request?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Harper, 1470 Crosspoint Road. I just, I love you guys. I love what you do. But my concern is foot traffic. As we heard at one of the last meetings, there was already some foot traffic noted that is not normal for our area. A few people going through South Wind subdivision on foot, one intoxicated. I can't remember the other ones. Apparently somebody possibly living in a tent. I have a child that is at Kid University daycare about 800 feet and it just concerns me. And I don't live in Spring Valley. I live in South Wind, but I know and have lots of friends and family over there. My son goes over there to play and just the foot traffic through that area. So I was just concerned about possibly maybe some sort of sidewalks or something to get them to that area if they are going on foot.
Okay.
That's my biggest concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Arsenal Hawk. Last name is Hawk, so everybody called me Hawk. I came over here in Conway about like 20 years ago and
State your address, please.
Arsenal Hawk, 2315 Apple Blossom Lane. So I moved to South, Spring Valley subdivision about eight years ago. That time I was single. I just got married. I want to have kids. And I chose that subdivision because of the school, Allen Smith School, is I think you know that that's one of the best schools in Conway. And for that reason, I, I bought the, bought the house. And after one year, of course, I got one son, blessed with one son. And then after that, I have another son. So my, I have seven years old and four years old. After, when I bought the house, Soul Food Cafe was there and I love them. Personally, I love them because Ms. Ann also know that their missions and stuff like that, even where I used to work, they where I used to work, they used to fill up gas from my station. Anyway, and I sent so many people to Soul Food Cafe. That is not the point. Please do not feel us that we are your enemy. It guts to me like that personally. My kids cannot go outside. We have a walking trail over there. My kids cannot play, because we are not safe over there, because two months ago, there was a police officer back in my backyard looking for somebody, and there was a, like, snatching purse, cell phone got snatched up. There's so many issues that I cannot even tell you. It's not about these things. People are coming over there, more people are coming. Views are not that much. There's a barn, when I go out, there's a big barn, barn. Okay, fine. Then kids get scared of what is going on, Baba over there. I said, "Don't worry, they're doing good job." So the thing is, of course, they're doing good job, but before taking any kind of action or whatever you guys take it, they're doing a good job. We are there. Of course, my, one of my friend moved like two months ago, just two houses from me. He had to wait seven months to sell his house because of the, all the house prices went down, and that is a fact. If you go to Zalos or anything, and with all due respect, with all due respect, it is going down.
Thank you, sir.
Your time's up, Hawk.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else here to speak in opposition of the request? Seeing none, I'm going to pull it back again. Okay? Part? Yes. This is the time to do that. So, Mr. Harvey, I think most of our questions are probably going to be directed to you. Is that right?
I have some questions.
Okay, if you don't mind standing up at the podium where everybody can hear, we'll try to ask our questions loudly so that everybody can hear and you can answer.
Yes, ma'am.
Who wants to start?
All right, for a point of clarification, are you saying that the religious activities that you're holding now outside, you want to move to the Soul Food Cafe?
Yes.
Okay. Can you elaborate on those activities a little bit?
Would love to, Marilyn. We get there about 7:00, and we set up and prepare ready for people to come in. We open our doors at 9:00. At that point in time, we give out a free continental breakfast, toiletries, clothing, haircuts. Then at 10:00, we have a worship service, and we sing hymns. We have announcements. We take prayer requests. After that, a preacher will come up. We've had Neil Winstead and Philip Fletcher and Mark Dan, several ministers, Tim Britton at First Church of the Nazarene, myself, I preach a lot there. The service is designed to last one hour, from 10 to 11. After that, we give an altar call. After we give an altar call, we give away Now What's, which are booklets that tell people that have accepted Christ how they can further their relationship with Christ. We also ask if anybody would like to be water baptized, that we would love to water baptize them. We have, we baptized 41 people already this year, and so they, and we have a certificate we give to them. And then we open it back up from 11:00 until 12:00, so one other hour, where people can get the different things that they want. And then at 12:00 to 1:00, we do another service. So it's kind of like a lot of churches today, they have multiple services. We have multiple services. And then at 1:00, we give out food boxes as well. And so basically, we call the people out, usually by about 10, maybe 15 at a time. They go out into their car, they drive around the building, we load the food box up in their trunk or where they want it, and they drive off. So it's not like a church where you would have 150 people there, and now the service is dismissed, and now you have to have people to traffic control and all that. We just don't have that, because they trickle out the way that we do it. Now, we, I'm sorry, am I taking too long?
No, no, that was just a good segue into the next part of the question.
Close at 3:00.
Right. I wanted to address the question someone raised about the ingress and egress into the facility and your plans for improving that with, you know, for traffic flow.
The traffic flow really is going to come from South Donaghy. And they talk about this entrance, I'm trying to remember that street, is it Deli that comes in? And we own that acre right there. I actually sat down with Kevin Watson way before any of this stuff happened, and his brother Tom, and they wanted to do a land swap with us. And they wanted to swap two acres of land. One acre was the entrance, the other one was half of our parking lot. And then they were going to give us the two acres on our other side that has total easement on it, you can't build on it, has two springs on it, and they said they'd put about $8,000 worth of gravel on it for us. And I just asked him if that was a fair deal. That's all I asked. And they decided to end the meeting. So they ended the meeting, and I shook Kevin's hand, and I shook Tom's hand, and I said, "Why is this meeting over? I didn't say I wouldn't do anything. I'm still willing to negotiate." They wouldn't talk to me. So it didn't end in a bad deal necessarily. My wife and another Realtor was with me from representing us, and Tim Tyler was there as well. And kind of mysterious, but anyway, I left. And Tom called me that next Tuesday, wanted me to call him back, Tom Watson, and I tried to call him back and voicemail, and he didn't call me back since. So I just want you to know it's open. We would love actually to do a land swap. Now, it may not be exactly what they wanted, you know, two prime, where they're going to build $250,000 homes, four of them, that's a million dollar, and then two that can't build on, it's got springs on, and it's not worth anything. We might, but we'll negotiate with them, reasonably negotiate with them. So that's definitely, so all of our traffic, we want to go out through South Donaghy. And we found that that works really well. It doesn't bother the school, it doesn't bother daycare. Actually, the time that we're open, that we actually do this, is in between the times that they do what they do. So I don't see where it'd cause a problem at all.
I went out there this afternoon, just drove all the way around the building and everything, and I think two cars can fit on that road fairly well. I did not see a problem with that.
They can fit. We've done this.
So one, I mean, I don't-
We've even put orange barriers in the middle. I'm talking about standing barriers in the middle, so we have an inflow and we have an outflow, and it works.
Okay. Continue with your question.
Well, thank you. I just wanted that cleared up. One of the, someone else had raised that question.
Thank you.
And another lady had some suggestions. I think I'll yield to some of the other commissioners, because, you know, they may have some questions.
Is this just one day a week? It's a proposal to keep it at just a Tuesday, or is to expand it to more days a week?
Well, we don't really want to limit our religious activities. I mean, do you limit what Central Baptist Church does?
I don't, it was a question, it was just a-
Well, I know, I'm not, I'm so sorry.
With all due respect, Central Baptist isn't, isn't-
Okay, well, any church.
Bringing cars in, yeah. But I mean, you're about the only one that does the food distribution.
No, there's a lot of them that do food distributions. There really is. I'm really sorry. I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you.
How many days a week? How many days? Hold on, hold on, hold on.
My question was simply, not about anyone, my question was, you do it one day a week now. Is your plan to expand that to more days a week?
What if I want a prayer meeting? See, you're seeing us as a food ministry. We're a church, we're a church.
You're answering a question with a question. I'm just, is your plan right now, it stands right now, not really, not really talking about any, is your plan right now to keep it at one day a week, or is your plan to, and that may plan maybe six months, maybe a year, is your plan to expand it from one day a week, as it currently is, to more days per week? And that's, I mean, that's just the question.
Arthur, I'll just say this to you. There's nothing on the drawing board, there's nothing that's been discussed in our board meetings to do more than what we're doing right now. So I'll answer it that way. That's the only way I know to answer you. I would hate for us to be constrained in all these conditions put on us that we can't even be a church. Folks, we're a church. Look at our bylaws. Look at our constitution and bylaws. We're like First Baptist, we're like First Nazarene, we're like St. Joseph Catholic Church, we're a church.
My problem is, though, if I can say something, is that we seem to be lumping religious activities to giving away food.
We're preaching, we're having services.
I understand that, but you're lumping that altogether. So I go to Central Baptist Church. We have a food pantry that we do one day a week, if I'm not mistaken. And the rest of the time, the staff is there. We have church on Wednesday nights and on Sundays. But we don't give out food during that time. We just give food on Tuesdays.
Well, I guess you need to get a definition of what a church is then, because, see, I read the Bible, and the Bible says that the Apostle Paul came, and First Century Church came, and they ate bread together.
I read the Bible also.
No, I'm not saying you don't. I'm just saying, it's the definition of what a church is.
We're not going to get into that. What we are going to do is probably put conditions on this if we approve it. I mean, that's just going to be, because we're going to try to be good stewards of what we're tasked with here, okay? So let's just all settle down, and if you would answer our questions, that would be great.
I thought I was, Ann, I'm not trying to be-
And I understand you're not trying to be difficult, and we're not trying to be difficult either, but we're just trying to gain some clarity as to what's going to happen here. Bruce?
I had one.
Yes, sir.
Are you, give me projections as to if you expect to have more, like, come through, any, specifically, like, growing, I know they're talking about growing, but it's the traffic coming in, like, over the years, you've grown, right? So do you expect to have, and the reason why you're growing is so many trips per, you have a drive-through, right? The drive-through for the pickups, right?
Yeah, they, I mean, at the end-
That's my main question, is that drive-through, is that something that you see anything to do with the school activities? Is it during at the school activities, like, where they would be walking to school? Is that, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, I do not see that.
Okay, that's not during the school time when they're walking to?
Right.
Yeah, we do. Well, and it is in committee right now. We were just asking some questions, trying to get some questions answered. Do you have any statistics, over the years that you've been doing this, do you have any, can you tell me how many times there have been a violent incident?
I don't know of any.
Okay.
We've had people that have had diabetic problems where they've fallen over because of insulin. We've had paramedics come in to help them. But you have to understand, we're helping elderly.
Right, I understand.
You know, and so they're in bad health.
I'm asking specifically about crime.
Specifically, no, I don't know of one time.
Okay, in 16 years?
In 16 years.
Okay. Ma'am, I'm sorry, but the time is not now. I'm asking you as, honestly, give me an answer.
Here's something that happened last Tuesday, the Tuesday before last. A lady who came in, came to me and said, "My car needs repairing, and I need my brakes fixed." And so we worked with her to say, "Hey, let's see what we can do." At the same time, DHS gave her a phone call and said that, "We're going to be coming to your house. We need you to come home." She said, "How am I going to get home? My car doesn't work." And I said, "Well, we can get you home. We'll do whatever we need to do." We did repair her car, and her car is running today. During that time, DHS gave the address of where we were at and sent police officers to come and get her. And so they actually escorted her out of our building. Now, is that crime? I don't think it's a crime. So there are times, maybe, when police do come, there's been times when police have said, "Hey, listen, we're looking for different people. Can we come in?" We said, "Yes, we would like your presence." Anytime a policeman wants to come, we're totally open for them to come. They came, they saw nobody, they left. But other than incidents like that, I don't know of any crime.
Okay, let me ask you this. Do you ever run out of food? Is there a specific amount of food that you have?
You never run out of food, Ann.
That's fabulous.
It's unbelievable.
Well, my question is, is there, can you service anybody that comes through? I mean, as many people as come through on a Tuesday, because our population is growing, there's, you know, we're need, just by virtue of the fact that we're growing.
We actually feel like, in this new location, that our numbers are going to go down, and mainly because people drive, and we don't have foot traffic. I mean, everyone's worried about this foot traffic and people getting hurt. We just don't have it. I mean, the only time that I can remember that we really had a lot of foot traffic is when we were at Second Baptist at 701 Polk Street. And we did have some people, it's kind of the hub right there, but where we're at, you just don't get it. When we were at 32 Bronny Lane, we didn't have any foot traffic, over there by Baptist Hospital.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Harvey?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, just my two cents, this has been happening at my church, and there's been no problems. For the last 18 months, it's been happening at my church.
I do have, bear with me, Ryan.
Yeah.
I do have a question, and I'm not sure if it's more appropriate for Brian or more appropriate for Mr. Clausen to answer, but per our current regulations and code, what is the true definition of religious activity? Whoever wants to tackle that question.
Actually, it's on page six of your report.
All right.
Very nice.
Did I miss it?
Place of worship and religious training.
Got it.
Oh, okay.
I didn't even include any accessory housing facilities.
Did you read that for the public?
I absolutely can. The zoning ordinance defines religious activities as "a place of worship in religious training and including accessory housing facilities such as a rectory, a place where persons regularly assemble for religious worship which is used only for such purpose, and those accessory activities as are customarily associated therewith." Uses include, but are not limited to, house of worship, church, convent, or monastery, or whatever that word is that I don't know, synagogue, or temple, parish house, parsonage, or rectory, Sunday school facilities, religious retreat facility. But the thing is, and this is not in here, well, A1 uses allowed by rights are not anywhere in there. A1 uses allowed by conditional use, church, community center-
Childcare.
-childcare. Well, I'm trying to think of the things that might pertain to this.
I think, I think it's there, Ann. I think it's church.
Yeah, church. I would say this is going to fall under church or community center. It could be argued that this is a community center as well.
Well, since, I think with the activities that take place in the facility, it's a church.
Sure. Okay, so that's an allowed conditional use.
So that's when you get into the services they provide and the community outreach, I think that's an extension of their religious activities.
Okay. Regularly assembled for religious worship.
To me, this is no different than a church. They do a little more than maybe your church or my church or any other church. This is no different than a church.
I totally agree with that.
And the traffic holds no water whatsoever. That neighborhood we just approved down the street that's about to go in is going to have way more traffic than this place it will ever have. I think they're getting around just fine in there. You know, I'm sorry to the lady that has PTSD, but that place was there when you bought that house, and I mean, it was there. And, you know, you've only been there a year. I'm sorry, that's terrible, and I'm sorry about your situation, but, you know, if you want a higher fence, I think that's your responsibility to do that. You know, 50 or 60 people opposed to it, I get that. It's a weird situation, but, you know, and that's why I voted against the homeless shelter. But this, to me, is a church, and I have no problem with what they're doing or what they want to do.
Especially-
This is not up for discussion, ma'am, sorry.
I'll just weigh in to you, because I think especially given that there's precedent for this land in particular to be a church, I don't see how we could deny this use as well, given that instance that it formerly was a church and now it's being asked for the same thing. I mean, it's just hard to say that, hey, we gave it to somebody else previously, not necessarily this commission, but the commission in general, and now we're going to say that this person can't have it for that access. That would be, that would be hard to do. That's my opinion.
I'll entertain a motion if somebody would like to make one, but we need to remember that we can apply some conditions if we need to.
Yeah, I'm not saying we shouldn't have some additions.
I think for the food distribution, I can't talk, obviously. For the food distribution, I think that we should have some set hours, a set day. Tuesday seems like it's been working, and then Wednesday night services and Sundays.
100%. If New Life Church wants to give away food on a Thursday because somebody needs some food-
They give it away.
-we would never limit them. We would never. There's no reason to do that here. I'm making motion to adjourn.
With no conditions. Is there a second?
Hold on just a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're still discussing.
I don't see anything wrong with putting up a fence, if there's not a fence there, a tall fence to separate the property at Toll Food from the houses adjacent to it.
No, there had, well, yeah, there has.
Well, there's been, there's elaboration for discussion.
We can, I mean, we can discuss the motion.
Well, I don't want to go back out there, but I think that if I read in his spec earlier that they were fencing up that side of the-
Are you putting in a fence?
They're putting in a fence.
Tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. So, we have a motion by Bronn, and a second by Brooks. All those in favor?
Aye.
By show of hands? Show of hands? Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor, that's enough to pass the, um, the request. So, congratulations, Mr. Harvey. Okay. So, what now? I'm going to ask very loudly, if you're going to leave the room, please do so very quietly, and make sure you don't talk until you're on the street, we have more business to conduct. Thank you very much.
When do we end the conditions?
We didn't, there are no conditions.
So, they can do it five days a week?
Yes, ma'am. Sure? No, this is my church. Now, people need to understand, this still has to go through city council, okay? So, rally your troops.
Okay.
Moving on. Please exit quickly and quietly. Okay, the second public hearing item on our agenda is the Independent Living Services request to rezone from R2 to MF3, property located at 385 Dennison Street. All right, is there anybody here to speak in favor of that request?
Hi, I'm Alyssa Douglas, I live at 1810 Washington Avenue in Conway.
You can wait if you'd like to.
72032, excuse me?
You can wait a minute if you'd like to. Trying to get all these people out. Although, that's the quietest anybody's ever lived in this place. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I'm also, I'm the executive director of Independent Living Services, and we own that property at 385 Dennison Street, we've owned it since July 1998. We have two gentlemen who live there right now, we've had three in the past, um, and we have, it's, it's a very large lot, if you've seen it before, it's a very, very large lot, small house, large lot, apparently, they used to do that back in the seventies, and, um, it's 1.7 acres for the lot size. And, we are in the middle of, or going to start a building project, we've, we've contracted with a builder to expand another location that we have. We have a day program located at 615 East Rob, or, 615 East Robbins Street, and we are expanding, we had already purchased the land next to it years ago, and we are going to be expanding our day program, because it is full to the brim, and in looking at expenses, we would like to be able to consider selling that land at Dennison Street, and the value of the land would go up a great deal if we could do that and raise, or change the zoning to it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else to speak in favor of this request? Okay, is there anybody to speak in opposition of this request? Seeing none, we'll bring it back into committee.
Good.
Commission, whatever we're called.
This is really close to UCA, right? I mean, that's, that's what I'm thinking about, just right off, like a block or two from the stadium, really, just this picture is a little zoomed in.
It's, it's, and it's over there, like, going towards Margaret Van and Cross Street, that's the road that leads to it.
Gotcha.
But there are apartments and stuff, all, I mean, it's, all, and they're all around there, so I don't see this as being anything.
Yeah, I've got no problem with this, if anyone else, I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, Bronn has made a motion to approve, and, uh, Arthur has, has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, Mr. Rice, the only opposition? The motion passes.
I don't like speculative though.
Speculative, I know.
And I understand that. There was something we turned down.
All right, number three, Alpha Holdings requests for conditional use permit to allow up to twelve dwelling units per acre in an R2 zoning district for property located at 1405 East Seben Morgan Road. Speaking in favor?
Yes, ma'am, my name is, uh, David White, I'll be the civilian generalist project, I work for, uh, Tim Tyler, Tyler Group at, uh, 240 Skyline, and, uh, my address, I currently stay in apartment at, uh, 10705 Paul Hills Boulevard in North Little Rock. You can see, we, um, the property is currently zoned for, for duplex, and, uh, Mr. Tyler, Tyler Turchi is the, uh, the owner, he's proposing, uh, multi-families, twelve units per acre, it's, uh, it's a little more denser than the, uh, R2, it's, it's, it's gonna be a nice looking, nice looking property on the, uh, options we have prepared.
We've got that. We actually have that in our, in our booklet, so.
Yes, we sure do, thank you.
So, are those little things, like, outside of number five and number nine, are those, like, carports or something?
Yes, sir, there's some covered, covered parking.
Covered parking, all right.
There is a, uh, this will be the main parking lot, parking, there'll be no parking on the street, I'll be back here, and there is an alley going around the perimeter with, with covered parking.
Okay.
And this will, this will, this will be, uh, market rate, it won't be, uh, low income or anything like that.
Okay.
The only thing this thing doesn't say is, is, is this property fenced?
Uh, no, sir, there, there is, uh, the American back does have a, uh, bannock fence currently, currently on the, it's, 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 it's required to be, um, six-foot barrier, um, on the perimeter of it.
Like a landscaping, okay. And then what about on the middle school side? What are you planning to do on that side, close to the middle school? Are you putting a fence in there, or what?
Right now, we have one plan, but we can, we can fence it, Tyler, have any ideas on that?
I talked to Brian about it, Brian Patrick, and he, he mentioned that just leaving it open might be better, but if you put a condition on it that we have to put a fence on there, then we certainly would.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we just, uh, we, we're trying to find that middle ground between, uh, you know, a freestanding home and, you know, a heavily dense apartment complex that's just three stories high and has a bunch of people packed in, we just feel like, you know, baby boomers, there's like forty thousand people turning sixty-five every day, and you got millennials coming up that don't wanna own, uh, things necessarily, and, and also got student debt, and then you got all the colleges around here, we feel like there's a market for something that's in between a house and, and an apartment complex, and that's what we're trying to hit here, and so, uh, you can see on the drawing, we, we tried to put one level there in the front, so it blends with the homes around it, and then all the parkings in the, in the interior, and then also in the back. We also put walkways between the units, and we tried to separate them, uh, so that they just, they just feel like, more like a home, and we, we have eight one-bedroom units that we're trying to rent for six hundred dollars a month, and then the remaining fifty-two, we're gonna try to get around eight hundred dollars a month. And, um, so, you know, again, just trying to hit that, that market between the garden variety apartment and, and a home, and we just think that there's a lot of demand for that, and, and we're trying to make it look nice and, and make it blend with the, with the neighborhood as best we can, and we've, we've also got covered parking for every, uh, for each unit has its own covered parking, um, your, your requirement, uh, let's see, you've required ninety-four spaces per the amount of units we have, we have a hundred and thirty-six, so we feel like we, you know, direct, because apartments have that issue where you, you, you meet the minimum requirement, and then there's, there's still too many cars out there, so, we, we're, we're trying to address that, we've got accessible units there, and, and we think that this is something that you would consider for, and Brian listed these, but just reiterate them, is that, you know, it, it's zoned for duplexes, and if you put duplexes in there, somebody could just meet the minimum requirement and not be as nice as this, so this gives you some control over what it's gonna be. Um, also, it'd be one owner, instead of, you know, if you did duplexes, duplexes go in there, then there could, could potentially be twenty different owners, and you know how it is, I mean, one guy's gonna keep his yard different than the other guy, and if it's, if it's one nice complex, it's, it's a little bit better for the city. And then also, the drainage, it, we'll have to submit retention to you guys, and you guys will be able to review that, whereas, apparently, with the duplexes, you don't, you don't have as much control over the, over the drainage, so, um, anyway, that's kind of our thoughts on it, and, and so what we're asking for, basically, you can get twenty duplexes on there now, we think, that's forty units, we're asking for the conditional use to bump that up to sixty, and we don't think that that's too far of a, of a reach, but obviously, there's people here that feel differently about that, but, uh, anyway, that, that's it, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Sorry, what was your name?
Tyler Turchi, and I'm with Alpha Holdings, and this is my partner, Boys Homes, and we're at 8800 Mall Mel Boulevard in North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody else here to speak in favor of this request? Okay, is there anybody here to speak in opposition of this request? Oh, you wanna speak in favor? Yes, sir.
I can't add much to what he's said there, but I can add, I'm, I'm Dennis Gunner, and Bonnie Gunner, my wife, we live at 1500 Trison Lane, which joins the property, and, and it, that's our property that we're selling. Um, we've lived there since seventy-one, and raised two boys there, we, we moved in there with my youngest son, he was two years old, my oldest son is two years old, and, uh, the only people that even lived on the property at that time, it was like woods and a cow pasture, was my mother and father-in-law, uh, and they were at the top of the hill, and we were back there, and we had one neighbor that was building a house, it was just like out in the country then, of course, things change, and when it got in the city and all, uh, I did try to rezone, and finally got a chance to rezone, and I said, "One of these days, I'm gonna get old," and I didn't think it'd ever happen, but blinked my eye and it did, and I might wanna sell the property. And so, I'm sixty-nine years old, I'll be seventy in March, and I said, "It's time to let someone else take care of property and bush hog and clean and everything," and so, we ca, I came to the planning committee and, and city council and, and got that done, it worked to our favor, and we appreciate it.
Okay.
Uh, I had to rezone my property where I live too, to O2, small office, because of, I'm in the heating and air business, and they wouldn't allow me, when the city wouldn't allow me to have my shop there, my air conditioning shop, and so, that worked out where I could keep that there too, and, uh, it just.
Do you live right next to this right now?
Yes, I'm adjoining my, my, the full width of my property is the full, nearly the full width of the property that's being sold.
Gotcha.
And, uh, I have no urge, no need, at my age, I'd, some will say I wanna move and all this, but I don't want to. You should see the stuff we've acquired, and I don't wanna move all that stuff.
Thank you.
I'm happy right where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, is there anybody to speak in opposition of this request? The first, the first person's gonna have ten minutes, and each subsequent person will have two.
I'm not gonna read the whole thing, the kids.
You wanna go first?
I'm gonna go first.
It's all good.
Do you need ten minutes?
I don't need ten minutes, do you need ten minutes? Okay, I'll go first.
Okay. First off, we got, we got, oh, Linda Di Madura, 1510 Angeline Drive, I live in Nicole Place, I've been there since 2011. Now, when we first got news of this, we got a letter, quite vague and a bit misleading. You can't make heads or tails of the written description, and the address, if you Google it, it looks like it's the nursery down the street, which is actually 1305 Seben Morgan. So, yeah, kinda bad there. And, I also checked into what requirements were, oh, and it also, when I got that letter, had you Googled, or called City of Conway? There was no information, seriously, they didn't have the diagrams, nothing. The average, this time of year, people are busy, preoccupied, it's the holidays, they might see this letter, eh, what the hell, toss it away. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse my French. Okay, now, was it, lost my train of thought. Oh, yes, um, I looked up what was required to get a conditional use permit, and I got that right here. Anyway, you have to notify people within a certain amount of time, kinda did it, it's vague, you gotta post in the, the Democratic, Republican, what the Democratic, whatever newspaper?
Yes, and the land has to be posted, we're aware of all that.
Okay, that has to be done, okay. They're also supposed to post a sign on the property that is visible. They didn't do that, they're non-compliance. There's a sign there, it was face down on the ground. The first time we saw that sign was on the eleventh, because I looked to see what the requirements were, so we drove around, we didn't see a sign, we drove by twice, we said, "Hey, there's something on the ground." So, we took our camera, we took pictures, I got pictures.
Unfortunately, that happens, I mean, we can't control Mother Nature, and the wind blows and things like that, it does happen, I'm not saying it's great.
What do you not like?
Let's get to what you want to. Okay, I do not like the fact that it's gonna be two stories, it's gonna diminish our privacy in our backyard, it could potentially run down property values, because nobody wants an apartment, a complex behind their house, if it had been there when I moved in, I would've moved somewhere else. For real, I would've, I would've purchased the house somewhere else. Not to mention the added traffic, could potent, could potentially be harmful to children trying to cross the street. Now, they say it's only gonna add, what, five, six hundred extra trips, they do not take into consideration the fact that there are four huge apartment complexes on East German, three tenths of a mile away, and, you know, Oak Street is hectic, so they go down Seben Morgan. So, yeah, really, but, that's it. Run down property values, get rid of our privacy, and, you know, the fact that it's gonna be a two-story townhouse, you know, if they have to build there, hold them to forty. Forty is more than generous. Of course, I found it kind of disturbing that the recommendations, in the recommendations, they already said that they were recommending approval, it was on your site, and that was before anybody had a say-so, but because it wasn't publicly posted, I mean, you can say it was blown down, but, you know, had they bought a hammer and put it in the ground, it might've stayed. The only time I actually saw the sign was on the fifteenth and the sixteenth, when it was poked through the fence, and then we had rain Saturday night, and it blew over again. They did not put effort into posting it, now they actually know how many people are here against it, but because of the way we were told about it, maybe they didn't know. And I guess you're not interested in seeing the pictures I took.
What are they of?
Of the sign being down.
I, we'll take your word for it, I mean.
But, it was actually up on the fifteenth and the sixteenth, but just poked through the fence, and that was the only time I ever saw it.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much, for your time.
Thank you.
Have an awesome evening. I don't speak well, so I have a letter, I've got one for everybody, if y'all wanna take one and pass it by, and I'll just kinda hit the hotspot. This land is my backyard.
Okay, we need your name and address.
Lisa Davidson, 1555 Billy C Drive, and, um, Dennis is my uncle, and like him, we have lived there, that land has been in our family forever, we are starting the fifth generation with my grandchildren, so we got lots of memories there, and lots of good times, and I keep my grandchildren every day, and that's what they look out of their playroom, that's what they look at, right out there, and the nursery, and their TV room. So, I'm here today to oppose this rezoning, and, uh, like they said about the traffic, the Department of Transportation estimates eleven thousand cars travel along Seben Morgan on a given day, making it the only two-lane road in the entire city of Conway with.
day, making it the only two-lane road in the entire City of Conway with daily traffic count of over 10,000 cars. This number's gonna increase anyway in the next months, because across the street from us, they're building homes. On museum, there's 150 unit thing that's approved, so the traffic is already horrible. If you're a person that works, and you want to try to get out to go, you ain't going nowhere. When school is getting picked up, I couldn't get out of my driveway if I had an emergency. I mean, there's tons of traffic, there's children walking. It's already approved for duplexes, which is bad enough, and at the back of my letter, it shows a picture of that, which, I hate to say that I'm for duplexes, but it's a lot better than two-story apartments with the parking lot is literally my backyard, literally. And the school also, those kids come over, they kick balls over all the time, they're gonna be kicking balls in their parking lots. So, if you have to do something there, he wants to sell his land, he can sell his land. But at least stick with the duplexes, it's less dense, it'll take at least 20 units away. And, you know, like she said, our property values, not that I'd ever leave that land, because it was my grandparents', and, you know, we have so many memories there, but if I wanted to, I couldn't, because who'd buy it with that monstrosity in the backyard? And so I'm just really hoping, and the schools are already pretty much at capacity, that's bringing in more kids, and we don't even have the 150 units and the houses across the street, it's just too much on a little bitty piece of land. I mean, my, it's not that big for that many people. It's crazy to try to cram that many people there, and it is literally an island surrounded by homes and a school.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's an island.
We're at Tom.
Thank you so much.
Hi, it's good. My name's Brooke Morgan, I'm at 1645 Trison Lane, and I've been living there since 2015. It was actually the first house my husband and I bought together, and we have two children, we've been raising them there. Our house has been a really quiet, quiet neighborhood, and we've really enjoyed the fact that it's been a quiet neighborhood. But with proposed apartments, we've already seen that there's up to 600 vehicle trips in a day, so that quiet atmosphere is gone. And that's kind of what we bought our house into, and what we want to raise our children with. This mentions me, to go back to the whole point of noise, I am a millennial, so I just, I'm now getting out of the apartments. We got out, we're out of school, we were in the apartments. There's cars going off all night long, there are lights, slamming doors, everything. I don't want that again. And even though it might not be what I'm living in, I'm gonna hear it all the time. And as I said, if I knew this, I would not have bought my house here. But I did, and I love my home. It's the white little picket fence home that I've always wanted. And now, there's gonna be up to 600 vehicle trips, there's gonna be an apartment complex off to the side. This is not what I envisioned for my home, for my family, or anything, and I do not want this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alan Schneblin, I live at 1475 Bill Lucy Drive, I'm sorry, yeah, Bill Lucy Drive. My property is directly behind this proposed development. I have approximately 325 feet of continuous land abutment, and first of all, I was never notified of any of this. I heard of it.
Neither were we.
Yeah, I wasn't notified, sorry, should've said that.
I heard of it from a neighbor who heard of it from someone in Nicole Place. When I first found out about it, I was shocked, because I was not legally notified. I've been here before. There was a gentleman out of Fort Smith tried to develop apartments across the street from us. Now Jacob Longing is building single-family homes across the street from us, we thought that was great. And quite frankly, that's what we would love to see behind us. You have Nicole Place across Seaborn Morgan, which is about 13 houses that would be affected that also abut this property. And when the property was annexed into the city and rezoned, none of us opposed any of this, because we didn't see duplexes as a bad thing. And now, they want to do apartments. So, my whole objection is, I don't want apartments behind me in the middle of single-family homes, and I was not legally notified.
I got a question, I'm just trying to figure out exactly where you live. You said, is it Bill Lucy?
Is it this one right here?
I got it pulled up.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The one surrounded by trees.
The one with all the trees?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I just didn't know where we were.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Anybody else to speak in opposition? I was reading.
I am Sarah Klapsa, and I'm at 1300 at Josie Ray Street, and I'm in McKenna Cove, which is off of Bill Lucy and Trison, and my mother lives in the house that'll be directly behind it. And my biggest concern is just the traffic. I know it says in the little booklet that there's, under street improvement, it says there's no current plans for street upgrades. And I know if you look on the Conway GIS, it says at least 50% of Seaborn Morgan is in critical condition, and I don't know with redoing some of the roads in the town if that is one, but I don't know if it is one to be redone, if it's just gonna be redone or just widened, because I feel like at least a turning lane would be needed there, because this proposed property is gonna be in between two entry and exits to Nicole Place, which is across the street. And then you've got this school traffic and everything, and it's full. And sitting at Trison, trying to get out on Seaborn Morgan is tough a lot, because I go that way.
I'm sure there'll be a roundabout there before it's all said.
But that's my biggest concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
My name is Bill Frey Aldenhoven, I live at 1575 Bill Lucy Lane, and the property is right in back of my house. I live right next to the school, and the property is right back there. I have a little park in the back for my grandkids, close to the fence. But I noticed, they said the guys upstairs over to office over there, that they liked the plan, because it was in the front, it was one-story. I like that, too. You know, I don't want to have a two-story. If they take the top stories out of that, it'd be about like same people that would put in a smaller duplexes, be about the same amount of people, and it's done for duplexes. And if they would stick to that, or just take the top off what they're trying to do, it'd be about the same. I agree with them, it'd be pretty, this is one-story. But I'd hate to see with this two stories in the back of my house. Now, I don't know if I'd, who I need to get to build a fence. Might have to get the president to put a fence down for me. And he'd have a high one and a pretty one. But that's the only thing that I, I just don't like being two-story.
Your lot there, that you're on, how many, how big is that? How big is that lot?
It's about between two and three acres.
Two or three acres?
Yeah.
And your house sits on the front of it that faces Bill Lucy, right?
Right, yeah, but I'm usually looking out the back door.
Yes, sir.
Never look out the front. But that, that's what, that's the only thing I have, is the two-story part of it.
Yes, sir.
I think he has it sold to someone that'll build duplexes in it also, so it's no problem with him selling the land.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nothing that says duplexes can't be two-story, though, is there? Is there anything that says duplexes can't be two-story?
No, they can be two and a half stories.
Yeah. So, I got a question for Brian. Okay, hang on just one second. Why did, why did you think that a fence didn't need to be there?
I'll get so everybody can hear me. Basically, well, to get for our TV viewing audience.
Okay.
We sit up front here, we have so many people, we abandon ship here. Reason I said that is because a lot of times you'll see apartment complexes and all, and they'll, they basically, it looks like a stockade, like trying to keep those people in there or other people out, or vice versa. So a lot of times, it just kind of looks like a barrier, where it doesn't blend in the neighborhood. Not that's always the case, you know, sometimes a fence may be a desirable thing, whatever, but that was my reason and comment on that, was just to make it not so stockade in appearance.
I got you. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
You have a fence around your house?
Nope. My wife would sure want me to put one up, but I can't see if this one will. Tell me to put up in the rocks and clay that I have.
Okay, well, is there anybody else to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we're gonna bring this back into commission. The two-story thing, I'm gonna go ahead and address that. Mr. Patrick has already said a duplex can be two stories, so you're not guaranteed, if this stays just like it is, that it won't be two stories. Duplexes can be. So, that...
I've got personal, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just saying that, that, I understand what you're saying, but we, that's not really something that we can control. So that being said, commissioners, what, what's up?
I was gonna say, I mean, I live in Brookfield West, which is just right on the side of East German, where they built all those apartments. I built before that one is a field. So, I mean, I would have loved to have been duplexes, instead of all those apartments that have dropped my property value, it's increased.
Yours, you're talking about the ones that are along East German, right?
Yeah, you go down there, Brookfield, Brookfield West.
Okay, yes, that's, I know exactly where that is.
So, I mean, it will, the only problem, my concern, is gonna be coming over the hill and by the school with that traffic. I mean, where is it gonna be, the, I guess, where will the duplexes be coming out at? Because if you're coming, if you're coming east on Seaborn, there's a hill, you know, and there's a, the walk, the crosswalk is like right there on top of the hill. And I guess that would be my two main things, is that, I mean, I wouldn't, I would take duplexes all day long over what I have, and there's, there's something gonna be built there eventually.
Right.
And...
If that crosswalk is, goes across to the school property, on the top of the hill?
That's what, yeah, yeah, it is, that's what I'm saying. I mean, that'd be my only concern, but there's already traffic going through there now. And of course, that's not really what we're here for.
I drive down Seaborn Morgan all the time to avoid Oak Street. I'm guilty of it.
I didn't do it.
I hate going down Oak Street. If I'm going out towards Bologna or something, I go down it all the time. I mean, I realize that, and I think it is on the critical list, and I think it is one of those that's set to be improved. I don't know that they're going four lanes, don't give me the line, but, but I know it is on that list to get those potholes and all that sort of stuff fixed, as far as the critical areas of that tax that we just passed in Conway. So, hopefully, that'll be addressed soon, but, I mean, traffic is still nothing that's ever deterred me from, from, you know, allowing stuff to come in. And that, I hate to break it to y'all, but all that green area out there by East German Lane, in the next 10 years, it's gonna be something.
Yeah.
And so, the City of Conway's gonna have to adjust going forward on the traffic flow and the patterns, which they've tried to do with roundabouts and different things, and, and hopefully, this tax will help with, you know, maybe widen some of these arterial roads like this, because I know it gets a lot of traffic, and I'm guilty of it. But, you know, there's gonna be more before, before it gets better, I'm just telling you. And that, traffic is not a reason for me to, to say no to this.
Yep, I agree. And personally, I mean, these, just my two cents, these don't look like apartments to me. These look like quadplexes or something, they don't, they don't really look like apartments, but...
I have a question. How many houses facing Bill Lucy back up to this property where the two-story?
It appears that three.
Just three?
These three right here.
Yep.
And with all these trees here, I don't really count that one, because it's got such a buffer. I would say these two are the main.
The big ones, yep.
Which is his property and somebody's mother's.
Put greenery or something to help it out?
Well, we'll, we'll get to that, we'll get to that in just a second.
Yeah, I don't know, putting some fence, maybe something on it, I think that's appropriate to do some sort of fence. I don't know if, Brian, you know, I know we've, in the past, we've maybe done some berms that look better, but I personally would rather have a fence if I was, A, the school, which nobody from the school showed up, but, you know, to keep traffic from walking over there at night, or whatever they're doing, but I don't care, I'll, I'll divert to y'all to whatever y'all decide on something like that.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with, with Brian on the fence, and I've been staring at this, the proposed layout that we have on 12 and 13. And I don't necessarily think, to Brian's point, to, to get around it not looking like a stockade, that we don't have to have a fence necessarily going around the entire property. Because you can see almost the first half, bottom half of the property, they have the extra additional greenery buffer, the shrubbery, that'll make it look like a natural transition in the community. But about halfway through that, almost, if that road was to go straight through that picture, from about there all the way back, I think that it would, yeah, it would be appropriate for the fencing to go there, and it would allow for the buffer and the lights, light noise to not go into the existing surrounding neighborhoods, et cetera.
Even if it was just a steel fence, and it went around the perimeter and just not across the front, that would be better than...
Yeah, I don't think you need anything in the front.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that.
Limit vision on pulling into Seaborn, which is busy, no doubt about it.
Just something to keep the ball, the kids and the balls out of the property, and people out of the, and who, out of the kid, out of the school.
Yeah, because while the, while there may be heavily, a lot of trees back there on property number one to the north of it, like we just said, that, that will eventually be developed into, I'm assuming, quite a bit more.
I think this is better than duplexes. I've seen some really duplexes go downhill in a hurry.
Well, and the thing about it is, is it can be sold, I mean, the duplexes are not gonna all be built by one person.
I try.
And can we mandate, period, that it has to be one-story? I mean, it would duplex or this, we can't mandate, we don't have that power.
We don't have that power.
So they build a two-story house there, we can't say, you can't build, this house is killed, so we have no control over that, right? So, okay.
So, I make a recommendation that we approve this with the five suggested conditions on page 14 of your handout, plus the extra added condition that a privacy fence, and Beth and Brian, I don't know how you want to word this.
And east side?
Northeast, well, I mean, just basically the top half. Yeah, the three sides. The top half of the drawing here on page 12 and 13 shall require some type of fencing.
I'll second.
Is that clear enough for you, Brian, or are you looking at me crazy? No?
Northeast and west side, so everything...
Halfway. By top side.
Except for the road.
Right. He means here. Right?
Yes.
Back, I call that the back. Are you okay with that?
Well, yeah.
The back, the top of the, yeah.
Whatever y'all say, you're...
Okay, this is what he's talking about right here, just, just...
All three sides, east, middle, west.
Not, I don't even think he means all the way down.
I don't.
Just, just the top, just from here to here.
I got you, I got you.
Yes.
I like that.
That way it doesn't...
Because this is, this has got shrubbery, it looks like, and, yeah.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
And my recommendation is that it be a privacy fence, not a, not a steel chain fence.
We see what you were talking about.
On this plat right here, if you go from right here, all the way around the back of it, to, to this right here, is what he's talking about.
Along the drive.
When he says top half, that's what he means.
All along your property line.
Side, east side.
The north side, which is your, your south side of your lot, all that.
Should put a minimum height on that.
Privacy fence height.
And it looks like they've got shrubbery along the front of it, and stuff that, because, I mean, those people are gonna have to have clear vision.
Six-foot privacy wood fence.
Okay.
Single pane is fine.
I think that will greatly reduce the noise, that, well, but you're on the other side of it, you're, you're, you're on the other side of it, so that's not a matter to you. Okay, we have, we have a motion by, who made, yeah, Justin made the motion, and Delinti is second. All those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed. Any abstentions? The motion passes. It will go to the city council, January 9th, I believe I said. Yeah, January 9th.
Thank you.
Okay, that will conclude our portion of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, can I... Madam Chairwoman, can I get a point of clarification on item number one of the public agenda tonight?
Yes.
What the final vote was?
The final vote was
Number one.
Seven
Seven-three.
Seven-three.
There's 10 of us. Nobody abstained. She only took the eyes.
I only took the eyes.
So the nays were three, or
And I didn't vote. So three, eight, nine, yeah.
Seven to two.
Yes.
By the way, I never spoke, I'm voice home, so I'm Tyler's partner, and I'm 50% of the people who are doing this. And I don't know what all is relevant. First of all, thank y'all, I appreciate it. And I know you guys have a tough job sometimes doing this. I'm a builder and a developer and will rock and At the next level in Conway, well, the city
City council?
City council meeting?
Yes.
Is, I know you guys are
We offer a recommendation, and they have final to either go, yes, we agree with that, or change it, or just flat vote it no. And whatever they decide is fine.
That's the deal.
That's it.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
All right, commissioners, a little laundry to lay us here. For the 2018 Planning Commission.
Excuse me.
I'm guessing we've got Jerry Wright as chairman? Who goes off the next, the next year? Who goes off?
It's Jerry.
Do you want to be vice chair?
No.
We can't have a chair and a vice chair for the same year.
From the same year?
Thank you.
Okay, so that's right. Justin. Justin's vice chair, whether he likes it or not.
You accept that?
Who, Wendy, you want to be secretary? Be the keeper of the time?
I can. Oh, yes. That'd be mean.
Keep Jerry on track?
Yes.
You'll get to sit right there by Jerry and keep him on track.
Yes, I'll do that.
All right.
Because I don't want
I did this earlier today. And y'all, y'all tell me if this is okay.
Yes.
For annexation, Brian is chairman, Delencia, Jerry, Brandon, and Wendy. For conditional use, Wendy is chairman, Delencia, Ann, Arthur, and Justin, hush. For subdivision, Justin is chairman, Ree, is that her name, Ree?
Ray.
Ree, Ree? Brandon, Brooks, and Brian. For zoning, I'll chair it, Ree, Ray, Jerry, Arthur, and Brooks. How's that look?
What was that last one?
For zoning, I'll chair it, Ree, Jerry, Arthur, and Brooks.
Let me write those down.
Well, we have to, we have to decide on this. I just Say that one more time, Brian, annexation, me, conditional use. Brian, annexation, you, conditional use, Justin, subdivision, because you did such a great job when Marilyn wasn't around. That's why I put you there. Um, zoning, me. Okay. And then, Delencia, you are on annexation and conditional. Jerry, you are on annexation and zoning. Brandon, you are on annexation and subdivision. Wendy, you are on annexation and
Additional use.
Uh, conditional use.
Those don't meet very often.
Arthur, you are on conditional use and zoning. Justin, you are subdivision and conditional use. Brooks, you are subdivision and zoning. And Ms. Ree, why can't I say Ree? Why can't I say that name? Is subdivision and zoning. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
What am I, I don't even know?
You're chairing the annexation
Get a new seat, get a new seat this next time, so I sit in the corner.
That's great. I got a three-year stand-up, not doing
Well, now, next year, you're fixing to get slammed.
Am I in subdivision, too?
You are
Brandon, Brooks, and Brian.
You're in subdivision, yes. Yes.
Y'all put me back in subdivision, so, okay.
Okay. Every month. We have the meeting dates on the back.
Yes, already on my calendar.
You don't want to be on subdivision, I can, I can, I can put Ree
I've been president of the Boys and Girls Club, and that's why I didn't
Okay, well, here. Let's, let's take, let's, let's put, let's, no, she's already on there. Ree? Let's take
Delencia is on there today, so she has some
Subdivision?
Knowledge.
Historical knowledge.
She knows about curb guts.
No, I'm fine, I'm not going to be president.
Rides away.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah, I just, yeah. That's why I had to be off last year.
Gotcha.
I gotcha.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Okay, is everybody clear on this?
All good.
We didn't change anything.
No, we just Yeah, that's why, I'm not going to be president anymore.
And our last order of business is our thank you to Ms. Marilyn Armstrong for her cop here.
We would love to present you with a plaque that says, "In grateful appreciation to Ms. Marilyn Armstrong, your dedicated service and untiring effort in planning for Conway's future as a member of the Conway City Planning Commission."
Yay, Marilyn!
Thank you very much.
We'll miss you.
I know, I really should.
There was a lot of clapping going on tonight, I'm going to give you the box. I want mine freaking dazzled by the time.
Not a bedazzled.
Hey, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I made it. Who seconded, Jerry seconded it. All those in favor?